Good morning, everyone. Nice to have everyone here this morning. We're glad to have Sanford Reeves with us this morning. He's the pastor at Mount Zion Baptist Church. And he's going to come and lead us in the invocation. If we could all stand and then remain standing for the pledge. Almost said National Anthem. Pledge of Allegiance.
Amen. I do want to thank, or thank all of you as the, as board members for the job that you do and the sacrifices that you make for the community. Especially trying to walk that fine line to make sure that all of your constituents are represented that are in your district, that you take that time and make sure that they all are represented. And that's not an easy task with your phone ringing and all. But I do want to thank you. Some of you have been here for a long time. Amen. But we are, I'm still glad that I live in Culpeper County. And it's because of the decisions that you all have made. So we are grateful for that. Let us bow his, most gracious heavenly Father, Lord God, we thank you. We praise you for this day that you have made. We thank you, dear Lord God, for the opportunity to be part of another day. We know that is for no, for nothing that we have done, but only because of your grace and your mercy that we are here, still standing today. We thank you, dear Lord God, for the fair, dear Lord, elections that we just had, dear Lord God. And we just thank you that everyone was safe, dear Lord God, and able to express, dear Lord God, that, that gift of voting. Oh, dear Lord God, we just pray at this time that you will bless the many. We know that we are brothers keepers. So heavenly Father, what profit a man to gain the whole world but lose his soul? So we pray for those who are less fortunate than we are, dear Lord God, the homeless, heavenly Father, and the hungry. And dear Lord God, those who are in those war zones, whether it's Ukraine or Gaza, dear Lord God, or Israel, wherever, Sudan, wherever it may be, we just pray in a mighty way, dear Lord God, that they will be able to enjoy the peace that we enjoy here in this great community called Culpeper County. Oh heavenly Father, we ask that you will continue to bless this board and heavenly Father to allow them, heavenly Father, to do what is, is best for the advancement of this great community. And, and dear Lord God, we just pray in a mighty way that as they continue to move forward, heavenly Father, that they will think about not so much the, the present, but the future, dear Lord God, what, what the generations forthcoming, heavenly Father, will have to deal with. And we just pray that they will get this right. Oh dear Lord God, we love you, we thank you, and we praise you, heavenly Father, and just pray in a mighty way, heavenly Father, that the decisions that are made here today will be for the betterment of all the people of Culpeper County. In Jesus' name we do pray. Let us all say amen. Amen and amen.
Thank you, sir. Okay, officially call the, order the November 8th Board of Supervisors meeting and ask Supervisor Dur if he'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, this morning before we move to the agenda, I think as everyone knows, we have a brush fire with our neighbors in Madison County. I think it's up to over 2,000 acres right now. And our volunteers are over there assisting them and have been working hard, putting their lives on the line, trying to help our neighbors out. And we appreciate them as we always do, but we really want to recognize them this morning before we get started. And I'm going to turn it over to Supervisor Bates to give a specific message to our volunteers and to the public to let them know what we're doing, what, what the volunteers are doing out there to Madison, helping Madison County. And Supervisor, Supervisor Bates.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Anytime that I can take an opportunity to shed light on our volunteer fire and rescue community, I jump at the, at the opportunity to let you know that, you know, our county is protected on a daily basis on a volunteer, a combination between our career staff EMS and our volunteer fire and rescue. But as many of you know, as Chairman Deal mentioned, on October 24th, brush fire had started in the Quaker Run area of Syria. As normal operations with our volunteer and career staff goes, we have a mutual aid agreement with other counties. And what that means is we can go out on a, on a health issue or a small fire or whatever. But this right here takes it to the next level. When we look at what was required of our volunteer staff with this fire is just unbelievable. And I'm just going to kind of hit a few highlights, and I want to spotlight each and every department that has taken part in this. But this fire now is up to almost 3,000 acres. It started out as a half, a half acre fire. It was in an area that was not easily accessible. These volunteers have gone over, and, and I'm going to mention each department individually, but what we're looking at from, in the November, end of November, I mean, end of October, November timeframe, some of them have stayed over there for 30 hours straight. There's hundreds of hours that have been given to Madison County to help fight this fire. We're talking eight and nine mile hikes. We're talking areas that is only accessible by foot, having to manually rake out fire lines, leaf blowers, trying to blow the leaves out to keep, prevent the fuel from, for the fire. But specifically, I'm going to go with, I want to, I want to mention them, Riva Fire, Fire Department, Salem, Brandy Station, Culpeper, Rapidan, Richardsville, Culpeper and Little Fork. Someone had to stay, stay, kind of stay back and protect the county while we had all of our, a lot of these volunteers over in Madison. And that's a collaborative effort between all the volunteer and career staff working together as a team to, to pull this off. So with that said, you know, it's one thing to loan your equipment, and I understand that, you know, keep in mind, this equipment is raised by fundraisers with these fire departments. But when you take yourself away from your family for an adjacent county, to me, these volunteers are the, they are the true fabric of what makes Culpeper Culpeper. Neighbor helping neighbor and selfless giving of yourself. So again, with, with Riva, they had five volunteers with over 80 hours. They supplied a brush truck, which was there for 31 hours. Salem, 10 volunteers. Brandy Station, they brought in a canteen truck, if you would, served two, plus a gator, six wheeled firefighting apparatus to, to get up in the tough spots. Culpeper Company One had a member over there that was helping. Riva, like I said, had, had several hours just last week, you know, working on the hotspots. Rapidan and Richardsville all played a part. Culpeper Company 12, Little Fork, as I said, were staying back, protecting the western end of the county. Again, I just want to, I want to, on public record, give a huge thank you and that we see what you do, we appreciate you, and I don't know what we'd do without you guys. Let me go back to kind of the, some of the unsung heroes sometimes is their dispatch, where without you guys, you don't get the wheels rolling. And again, thank you all for a collaborative effort. And I know Madison County and all of our surrounding counties really appreciate Culpeper and its volunteers. So thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bates. Okay, moving on to the agenda. Any additions or deletions to the agenda this morning or a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to request an addition if I could. We have a need for the board to supply a support letter to the school system for a grant that they'd like to apply for. And I have drafted such a letter. I'd like to have that considered this morning if I could. I'd recommend that be added at item 6.01.
Got it.
Move for approval with the addition of item 6.01.
I think we have another one. One more. Yeah, we have one more. John, we want, or Paul, if you want to go with 602, I think.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. If I could, I would like to add to the agenda, a discussion for implementation of an emergency ordinance prohibiting open fires and/or burning for the duration of this, of the dangerous conditions we're dealing with right now.
Okay, I think that's it. Entertained a motion to approve the agenda with the modification.
Move to approve with adding 601 and 602.
Second.
Thank you. Okay, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, consent agenda. Turn this over to our county administrator, John Eggers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, members of the board. Several items on consent this morning. Under item A, the board will ratify authorization of a public hearing to consider the adoption of increased tipping fees at the Laurel Valley Solid Waste Transfer Station. The hearing has been advertised for 7:00 PM this evening. Under item B, the board will consider acceptance and appropriation of funds in the amount of $7,000 from the Commonwealth of Virginia for the Sheriff's Office. The funds are for Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force. Under item C, the board will consider acceptance of a grant and appropriation of the funds in the amount of $13,021.25 from the U.S. Department of Justice for the Sheriff's Office. The funds are federal flow-through funds for Bulletproof Fest Partnership Program. Under item D, the board will consider acceptance and appropriation of two grants in the amount of $51,483 from the DMV for the Sheriff's Office. The funds are federal flow-through funds from the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration for funding of overtime for traffic enforcement. Under item E, the board will consider approval of a budget amendment for the Animal Services Department in the amount of $1,290 for funds received from the DMV from the sale of animal-friendly license plates in Culpeper County. Under item F, the board will consider acceptance of a grant and approval of a budget amendment in the amount of $800 from the PATH Foundation for the Culpeper Youth Network. And under item G, the board will consider acceptance and appropriation of three grants in a total amount of $73,500 from the Virginia 911 Services Board for the E-911 Department. The funds are for staff recognition, GIS mapping, and data transfer costs.
Move for approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, moving on to the minutes. Any changes to the minutes for the October 3rd AM or PM meetings? Or a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, general county business. We have two items. First, glad to have Mr. Carr here this morning, if he'll come up. He's going to give us an update on our broadband initiative, All Points Broadband. Glad to have you here today, Mr. Carr.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As you know, I've tried to make a point to come speak to you personally on behalf of the company twice a year. I'm sorry that I was not here last month, literally the night before the latest variant of COVID came rocking through the Carr household. So I sent my colleague, Tom Ennis, to give the presentation. I wanted to come today to, to repeat some of the key messages that he gave and make sure that I have the opportunity, you all have the opportunity to ask any questions that you have of me. So I'm not going to cover in great detail a number of the subjects that he, he did. I'm going to hit on some key points and talk about where we are. So if we can go to the next slide. Okay. You have seen this map before. This is the overview of the overall project. As you recall, the, the grant that we worked on in 2021 was finally awarded in August of last year. The project involves four funding partners. Oops, we went, sorry, go back one. You're going forward. Even better. Thank you. Okay. There are four funding partners, so All Points Broadband is responsible for $12.5 million plus of the overall costs. That's through our private investment. The plus is up there to remind everyone that all of the other funding partners, other than All Points Broadband, their financial liabilities are fixed. Ours is not. We make up the difference. And so to the extent there are changes or cost overruns or delays cause problems with cost, we are the party that is responsible for bearing that cost. Dominion Energy through the Virginia's Middle Mile Program is investing just under $3 million in their middle mile network. All Points effectively pays for that over our long-term lease fees. So those first two sources are about 50% of the overall project. We were fortunate to receive eight, little over $8.5 million in state general funds through the state VEDI program. And Culpeper is contributing about 22% of the project cost through your American Rescue Plan Act allocation. The project relies also on our electric utility partners in particular. Those include principally here in Culpeper, the Rappahannock Electric Cooperative. My colleague, Mark Ponton, is in the room. And also, of course, Dominion Energy Virginia is a significant pole owner in the county. Through this project, we're building approximately 480 miles of fiber optic infrastructure. Something that's really important to remember about this, it is brand new, state-of-the-art, future-proof, best-in-class fiber to the home. We're building it by definition to the places that are the most hardest to get to. That's why they're not yet served. And in the process, you know, when we think and design networks, we're not just designing exclusively to the 4,300 or so locations that are currently unserved, but we're building in the capacity in terms of the cable size and the network architecture so that in the future, we can, using our own investment, expand that network to connect to additional locations and also to create competition in areas where there is none today. In terms of the project status, and this is, we always remind our county partners of these three key dependencies, they're really three things that we need in order to be able to go and attach that last mile fiber to the pole so we can run a drop from the street into the customer's home. Now, that is the sexy, interesting thing that everybody cares about, is actually, when does it turn on in my house? That's actually one of the very easiest parts of the entire process. It's all of the unsexy, unglamorous work to get the infrastructure in place that is the focus now. I'm not going to talk a lot about that process today. My colleague, Tom Ennis, talked about that with you at some length last month. But there are three things we need. We need the middle mile capacity in place. So in Culpeper County, we'll be using a mix of Dominion Energy infrastructure and then various third-party circuits. We need utility make-ready, that is, in order to manage costs. Our fiber deployment here in the county is mostly in the air as opposed to underground. You've got a lot of rocks, a lot of unknown when you bury, so it can really drive up costs. And two or three are related. We need the poles to be made ready to safely accommodate our attachments, and then we need to build up a large queue of constructible work. Conditions in the labor market for telecommunications and particularly fiber deployers, the big boys, the large regional and national contractors who we prefer to use, they are requiring now four to six weeks of work, of backlog of work per crew before they will mobilize. And so instead of having one or two crews in a jurisdiction working, chipping away, the model now is a, a large number of crews coming and doing a whole lot of work at the same time. And so we're, we're reacting to that and adjusting our cadence accordingly. Lot of talk in the media in particular about supply chain and materials with respect to what are known as the OSP. That's outside plant. That's the fiber optic components. We are on schedule and our inventory is consistent, actually now exceeding plan. We ended the quarter with somewhere between $19 and $20 million of inventory on our balance sheet and about that much again sitting on our distributor's balance sheet so we can pull it down. Another reminder, you won't see that on our periodic reports because we have a performance-based contract with you all in the state, which means even though all that inventory is purchased and warehoused, we don't actually get paid for it until a, specific milestones are met. So for the OSP inventory, we're not actually paid until miles, our last miles are built. The utility pole fielding process is now underway. I know that's what Tom spoke with you a lot about last month. That's the, the key focus for All Points and all of our partners. The volume of that work going on throughout Virginia is absolutely crushing. And so this is something that we are literally in the field, or on the phone, working together just throughout the industry, throughout the, the contractor community, the pole owner community, and the attacher community to have this go as efficiently as possible. Right now, approximately 93% of the Dominion Middle Mile here in Culpeper County has either been constructed or released to construction. I actually saw several miles of it today coming up from Richmond on Route 3. If you look on the northeast side of the road, you'll see a whole lot of crews out there hanging fiber. And so that activity is underway. And the other activity that is underway right now, so All Points is making some modifications to our overall network design because we're adjusting that design. We do not plan to be relying on REC middle mile to the extent that we had originally. And so we're working to make the modifications that we need to get that design finalized out in a way that will not cause any additional delay or hiccups in our schedule and our process. In terms of pole attachment status, I, this is, these are the kind of key dashboards that I look at on a almost daily basis to understand how things are going and what our construction timeline might look like. So to date, and these numbers want to move a whole lot in the last month since you saw them, but we're now up to just under, well, just over 7,900 poles have been fielded. So that means someone has gone out and taken four pictures of that pole, analyzed what's on it, and we've got all the data that we need to do to run the engineering analysis and to submit all the information to the pole owner to attach. That fielding data has been under, the fielding, the collection of the data has been underway for a long time. And so looking at the chart on the bottom right, you see across the X-axis, there are seven FSAs. Six is not on there. It may be mostly underground or they haven't done the fielding there yet. But each of those is a discrete unit of the network. It's called a fiber service area. The height of the bar is the number of poles in that FSA that we anticipate attaching to. The color of the bar tells you the status of that attachment. So if it's gray, we've collected the data. You see, we've front-loaded, a lot of that data collection has happened. If the application is in the pole owner's queue, it's yellow. And if the last step in that process, meaning we have approval to attach, has occurred, the bar turns green. So here you will see, we began submitting applications in September, and we're just now beginning to see notices to proceed flow. And this is really the key determinant of when All Points can construct. We, we have to have poles made ready to safely accommodate our new, our new attachment to them. In terms of the timeline, no change here since Tom was here a month ago, but I'll run through it again with you today. The grant was awarded in the third quarter of last year, at which point we began low-level design. In the second quarter of this year, we began the make-ready fielding and engineering processes. In the third quarter, we achieved our first contractual milestone under the VEDI grant. We began submitting pole attachment application, applications. And Dominion's middle mile construction began. That's the 49 of those 53 miles have now been either constructed or released to construction. In the fourth quarter of this year, make-ready construction got underway. That's how you saw some poles beginning to turn green on the last dashboard that I showed you. And Dominion's target for completing their middle mile is the fourth quarter of this year. Looking ahead, we are planning to wrap up the modifications to our design based on middle mile changes in the fourth quarter of this year. That work is a primary focus right now. We are planning to begin our last mile fiber construction in the second quarter of next year. That will again depend on making sure that we have enough poles to attach to, and we've built up a large inventory of permitted and printed work to release to vendors. We would anticipate beginning to light customers in each of those FSAs that I showed you on a rolling basis, about a quarter after construction begins. We are projecting substantial completion of the, the last mile network in the fourth quarter of next year. As you recall, under our VEDI contract, we are extending certain benefits to customers on this network for a full year. So that's principally if you have a 1,500 or 2,500-foot driveway or that would otherwise require a long drop, there'd be no additional fee for that for a first year. And so those benefits go for a full year until we close out the project with VEDI, which would be in the fourth quarter of 2025. This is the schedule we have today. This is what, based on current trends, that we're anticipating to see. The two main dependencies that we're focused on to keep the project on schedule are the achieving the make-ready throughput and cadence that we have set with each of our electric utility partners, and also making sure that we can promptly complete our redesign and make any adjustments we need to on a timeframe that doesn't cause any additional adjustments to schedule. And we're optimistic that we'll be able to do that. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions you have.
Thank you, sir. Opening up for questions, comments.
I do have a question. If we could go back to the dashboard with the, showing the submission pools and all that. So this really hasn't changed in a month. What is the plan for all these that say to be submitted? I mean, we're talking about almost 8,000 poles and you might have 10 or 15 of them that are, or what did it say? 216 applications have been submitted?
I think in the last month, you, probably about 700 or 800 poles have been fielded. So that's adding to the gray bar. And we are now submitting applications into the utility owner's queue. We are, we do that wherever that we are confident, reasonably confident, we're not going to have to change a cable size or a route as part of the modification of the design that's going on, we submit those applications as soon as possible. If we think that on a particular route, instead of 144-count cable, we may need a 288, well, that's one of the variables that goes on the application, right? How big is that cable? How much ice does it catch? How much wind does it catch? So if there is a possibility that the size of a cable or some other aspect of the design is going to change, we don't submit that application because the whole process throughout the state is overwhelmed. So for us to submit a ticket that may not be correct is just putting additional processing and inefficiency in the process. So what you see, the process is continuing. We've connected another, collected another 700, I think, poles worth of data this month. So we have that information. We're keeping as much going as we possibly can. And as soon as we feel confident that we know exactly what needs to be on that route and the size of the cable, we'll submit it.
Well, at what point is it a, no longer we are confident or not confident, but at some point, there has to be a date that we're not going to make it if we don't submit these by a certain date. We can't just keep thinking about it forever. We have houses going up constantly. So if you're thinking about expanding the, the capabilities to certain areas, well, in eight months, there might be another 200 houses going along that route. So now that's just going to keep dragging it and dragging it and dragging it. We have a lot of people that are depending on this type of service, coming out to these rural areas that we promised them, that should have already been connected, are now being told that they have to wait another year. And it doesn't seem to me that we're making a lot of progress finalizing these designs and getting them submitted to the providers.
Well, I understand and share your frustration. And, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm here to give you a candid assessment of what's happening and what we are doing. And we need to be as, we need to be as efficient as possible in managing the workflow so that the overall project can be completed as efficiently as possible. In terms of adding additional houses along the way, the cable sizing should already reflect that, right? We plan, the, the network has additional capacity to, for, you know, growth along the routes.
So at what point are these design decisions going to be completed?
In the fourth quarter of this year.
So by the time we get our January report, we should see most of those gray blocks yellow?
By the time we get to January, we will know, to the extent we need to modify network routes or change what we were planning to submit as in, in our attachment permit, we'll know that then. And then that information will start flowing into know that then. And then that information will start flowing into any applications that are pending that unknown variable, right? So anything that we're confident in, or we don't think there's a risk that's going to change, we're submitting those now on a rolling basis. So everything we can move through the system.
Right, but they're very small compared to the 8,000 poles that you need to. It's 216 applications out of 8,000 poles. I mean, that's pretty slow rolling. And it seems like most of this schedule has been taken up by design, redesign, questions, lack of confidence. Like, at this point, when is it going to actually have a true point in time where this is the deadline? We are going to have all this submitted by this date so that we can start connecting users by October of 2024?
Yeah, so-
I'm not seeing that information.
When we think about the make-ready process, it doesn't do a lot of good just to flood the system with tickets, okay? The idea is to have a consistent flow and cadence throughout. Now, we already have a massive backlog built up for this project throughout other projects, right? And, and we can, there's only but so much capacity on anyone to process and review these tickets. And so, you know-
So what is the monthly cadence of what you're going to be submitting then? If it is a cadence, are you submitting?
Our, our objective statewide, because when we look at this, we have to balance within a project and throughout the state and among pole owners, right? So any given pole owner has got a project in Culpeper County with All Points, and they may have a project in Hanover County with someone else, and they may have something else going on over here. So we talk to pole owners, okay, looking at what you are anticipating seeing, pole owner, when is the optimal time for us to submit tickets in your particular jurisdiction? What's the order? So we do that with each power company. And that has, that also relates to how we think about our design schedule and how we balance that load. And so it's a very complex symphony of figuring out how to make that as efficient as possible. And that's what we're, that's what we spend, you know, probably half of my time and half the time of our, our senior-most engineering and operations leadership is about managing the make-ready process.
So are you guys having weekly meetings with both of the providers so that we can understand exactly what this timeline's looking like?
It's, those meetings happen several times a week. And in some cases, like route review calls probably happen two or three times a week.
Okay. Is there any way to get more data of the fact of, so the Culpeper project with each of the two providers is X percentage of their statewide estimates at this point to understand where we fit into the process? What, because-
So let me give you some stats. Prior to this year, the single greatest year that Dominion Energy Virginia had, the, the single largest number of pole applications they had received in a single year was 12,000. This year, they're on pace to receive probably 80, 85,000. And next year, that will probably be one and a half times that. That's publicly available data that's been put out. I know in the case of REC, that the magnitude of increase is probably 10 times what REC would see in a typical year just for All Points attachments. And they have other attachments going on with other attachers throughout the state. So when Virginia said, we're going to take what used to be a $50 million a year program, and one year, we're going to put $750 million in it a year, something that candidly, a lot of thought went into is, okay, how are the ISPs going to handle that? Something that in hindsight, everyone in the ecosystem didn't think enough about was, how are we going to manage the make-ready aspect of that? So it was smart of Virginia to do that and get out ahead because as the federal bead money comes down, this becomes a bigger problem throughout the country. But it, it's just, it's a generational wave of this activity. And there's only but so much capacity any individual ISP or any individual pole owner has to process the tickets. And it's not, I, I share your great frustration about this process, but this, this is the process. And we spend the lion's share of our time working with our partners to figure out, how do we make it more efficient? How do we eliminate sending permits back and forth? How do we make sure that we're using one vendor to do all the work instead of two separate vendors? How do we balance the load as between the eastern half of the county or the western half of the county, or Dominion's northern region or their central region, or REC's projects with All Points and REC's projects with others? And so it's, this is what we spend a huge amount of time, several times a week. We have engineers, our vendors, the pole owners, the pole owners vendors, folks out in the field, several times a week, literally working on making this process more efficient and speeding it up.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of questions. Was, what we're speaking of, when this project first came to Culpeper, I mean, were these issues not known of before this was presented to the county? And my second question, I was led to believe when this was first presented, King William County was used as an example in the eastern part of the state. I was under the impression that it was pretty much completed. And can you give me an update? I mean, do you have any areas in the state that have been completed? And give me some idea of what the timeline was from start to finish? And maybe that would help answer Ms. Cugino's question somewhat, where we are in other places in the state.
Yeah. So I think with respect to King William, I believe that Culpeper used a cooperative procurement that King William issued to procure us. In terms of All Points, we will complete the five-county northern net, network where we built about 850 miles to date in the second quarter of next year. We, in terms of the, the timeline and the cadence on, everyone knew make-ready was an issue when people began, as did All Points, submitting applications in the 2021 VEDI round, okay? What people did not anticipate was that instead of that being a $50 million a year program, which it typically was, it went to be a $750 million program. And so a known issue that where there is limited processing capacity in any particular pole owner or vendor, right? So it, you could do statewide $50 million worth of aerial construction and related make-ready. That's a, that's a level that the system was used to and could accommodate. But when you increase that by 15 times, it puts inordinate stress on that system.
So King William was started, how much sooner, how, what was this?
The King William grants were awarded in the same cycle that the, this grant was awarded in.
So the Northern Neck, are there any areas in the Northern Neck now that have, that have been completed?
Yes.
And what was, what was the start-to-finish time on those?
That grant was awarded in September of '21. It's a larger project than this, and that will be a little over two years to complete. Two and a half years is the math.
So the issues between, there are utility companies, and I hear Dominion mentioned a lot, and not so much, I know there was some pricing differences or something that had, all that's been worked out? Is that right?
We are working very well with Dominion and REC on the make-ready process. That's what we spend a lot of time on. In terms of the, the middle mile issues, we're continuing to use Dominion as planned. That's what's out under construction on Route 3 today. And we are modifying our design now because we're not going to be relying on REC to the extent that we thought we would previously. And so that's what we're trying to catch up right now and to do that on a timeframe that won't cause any schedule delay.
I just, for my constituents' sake, the fourth quarter of next year, that we're doing a jig up here because we've gotten this thing wrapped up. And I just, from past experience, it just seems like the, the goalpost just keeps getting moved and moved and moved. And it's very frustrating.
I understand and share your, your frustration. Those, the cost delays have caused cost increases, and we at All Points eat those. And we want to be building network and generating revenue as soon as we can. And so that's not, it, it's not good news for anyone that we are not on the schedule that we want it to be.
Thank you, thank you for coming in. So just to clarify, you're in the process of a middle mile, middle mile redesign right now. That is, soon as that's completed, you will know what you need for all the make-ready poles. And because the middle mile redesign will be, you're roughly, I don't know, a month into it or whatever, you'll be done in another month or so. There are no other anticipated delays. It's just a question of make-ready, make-ready pole progress after that?
Yeah, we got to adjust the design so that we make sure that we've already collected all the right data on the right poles, and then we can begin finalizing those applications. And now the, the applications in the pole routes that we don't think, that are not risk at change in terms of cable size or location, those will continue to flow.
Right. Okay, great. Thank you. Appreciate the update.
Okay. I shared my frustration last month, so I won't go back into it again. But we appreciate you coming and expounding on the message that we received last month. And keep us abreast. I'm sure you'll be working with John to do so. So thank you for coming.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next, the board will consider awarding a contract to BFI Transfer Systems of Virginia to operate the Culpeper County Solid Waste Transfer Station and transport the waste to their old Dominion landfill for disposal. And Mr. Howard has come up to the podium. I'll turn it over to him.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The county's contract that was awarded back in 1998 with BFI is expiring in the middle of November. We did not have any additional renewals available for that. So we issued a request for proposals back in June to operate the transfer station using the same scope of work that we have now. We, five companies attended the pre-proposal meeting. Two of them submitted, two of them declined and gave us a reason. Waste Management declined to submit a proposal because there wasn't a sprinkler system in the transfer station. They're having a lot more fires now from lithium batteries, so they wouldn't operate the facility without a sprinkler system included. And GFL does not have a landfill available for disposal up until 2025. So we've received proposals from Republic Services, which is BFI Transfer Systems of Virginia, and Meridian Waste. We negotiated a contract with Republic Services, which is 88.50 per ton, to operate the transfer station, load and dispose of the waste, which is significantly more than what we're currently paying, which is $57.75 per ton. Talked to some of my counterparts in the solid waste industry. They're saying, mentioning that there's been a lot of consolidation in private landfills in Virginia now compared to 1998. There's basically five public, private mega landfills in Virginia, so there's a lot less competition than there was back when a lot of localities had their own landfills. They're all experiencing a lot of cost escalation with labor, hauling, other costs. So their prices that they're awarding now for contracts are a lot higher than what we had on ours. They're also, we also import a lot of waste from out of state, so you're also competing with the cost of imported waste as well into those private landfills. So the contract is here for your award. There is a bilateral termination for convenience clause with 180 days notice for either party. So our intent now would be to issue an RFP for just hauling and landfilling and see if, if we operated the transfer station and took that risk, if we could bring that price down. So that's the next avenue that we're going to take. Any questions?
Maybe just to highlight again the length of the contract so that we're aware-
This contract is 10 years if we, with 180-day out clause.
Okay.
The previous contract was 25 years.
How much does this mean that, that after we, based on what we assume as volume collection, how much will the taxpayers be paying annually for transfer costs under this new contract?
The total amount, I'm not sure of it. $675,000 more than we're paying now, assuming the waste volumes stay the same.
Okay.
That would be a little over, if my memory serves right, it'd be a little over $3 million a year, the new contract price.
Okay, so-
Around 2.6 right now, 2.5 million?
I believe that what this means is even with the proposed increase that we're looking at, it's a pretty much an extra penny on the real estate tax rate relative to landfill now.
That would, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Has this been through public works?
It has.
That's what I thought. So I just want to make it clear that it has been through public works and been discussed and looked, looked at pretty closely.
That's the reason that we're looking at running it as doing an RFP to see if we have the employees there, what would happen. So what Paul said is a step we're going to take to see if we can save more money. It's, it's not good news. It is going to increase the tax burden, and it's also placing a greater burden on us for the trash that we don't charge for. The two sources being those that drop it off at our two transfer stations and that, that we get residential from the town. So hopefully, looking at step two, we'll be able to save a little more money. But signing this is the best we can do, is in my opinion.
Okay. Yeah, I just want to make sure the, the public understands that this is not the first time we've heard this today. If we do approve it, that it's been collaborated on many times in, in public works, in our public works subcommittee.
And it was a public solicitation as well.
And a public solicitation. Thank you, sir. Okay, any other comments or questions? Or entertaining motion?
Move for approval of the contract in a second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Okay, new business that was added to the agenda today. The first item is school support letter, and I'll turn this over to John.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Before I move on to this item, I just want to note that we seem to have lost board docs. So for those of you using your iPad or for Kim who's trying to display the agenda, we seem to be out of order for the moment. But that's apparently something system-wide and not unique to Culpeper. So let me move on with this item. In front of you today and emailed out, I think, late last week or first thing this week, is a letter from Dr. Bradz to Chairman Deal requesting a letter of support. There is a source of, of funds for school construction called the School Construction Assistance Program. I believe it's a fairly new pot of money. It can be applied for by the schools between now and the end of this month, which is why we added it to the agenda this morning. This source of money, again, is for school construction and could pay for between 10 and 30% of the cost of renovating Culpeper Middle School. So as such, the schools, I think wisely, would like to put in an application for those funds at this time. The application process does require a letter from the board supporting the effort and verifying that the board understands that, that it won't reduce the school's funding support based on this type of a grant. So I think that, you know, we wouldn't take money away from the schools just because they received the grant. I think that's safe to say. There is a draft support letter at your place as well that was carefully worded to, to make sure we weren't painting ourselves into a corner. And today, looking for a board approval for the chairman to sign that letter of support so that Dr. Bradz can include it in his grant application package. If you have detailed questions, Dr. Bradz is in attendance this morning.
Dr. Brad, you want to come up?
Sir?
We always- We always like hearing from you.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and Mr. Eggerson. Happy to answer any questions you may have. I will say, this grant application, as Mr. Eggerson said, is new funding. It was 2022 General Assembly, I believe, to the tune of $400 million with another $50 million out of literary funds. That application process went through already, and school divisions who could apply had to have, you know, all their ducks in a row in terms of the application process with respect to things like plans on a CIP, governing body support, those kinds of things, for a scoring mechanism. And in that scoring mechanism, out of 100 points in 11 categories, our goal is to get 65 points. And so, with your support of this, we get five points towards the 65. And we're going to be very close based on the fiscal stress and/or lack thereof of Culpeper County overall. So, any and all points that we can get towards that 65 will help us possibly get at the remaining funds available of that $450 million available for school construction. So, again, as Mr. Eggerson very clearly explained, the intent, we think, is that, you know, not to, I'll use the term "hold harmless extra funding" for the school division over the course of the project. Not the occupancy of the project, but just the project. Unfortunately, in their terminology, they use the word "percentage." And the percentage can be a little nerve-wracking, because do not reduce the percentage when, in fact, we do not use that basis upon which you fund the school division. We do not use the percentage. We understand that, recognize that. We do not have a funding formula that has a percentage. Many divisions do. I think that's probably the default mechanism that came into this question to say, "Don't reduce the percentage." Conditions change, revenue changes. You have some big revenue projects coming online. At any rate, we understand that the intent would be not to, we think the intent is not to reduce funding based on receiving the grant, as John said. I happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir.
I don't know if this is a, I don't know who the question is for, but when I look at the language, it says, "The local," quote, "the local governing body to maintain or increase the percentage of local revenues dedicated to public education throughout the duration of the financing proposed or already executed for the project." So, does that mean for the duration of the period that we're financing the renovation?
No, sir. My understanding, in talking to Richmond and other grant winners, I've talked to folks who have received this funding, their explanation of that, again, potentially poorly worded in this application question, it's the duration of the project construction. So, it's, in other words, hold on, hold fast what you're doing until that project is done, then reevaluate how you're funding the school system if there's a percentage base that you're using. We do not use a percentage base. So, it's not, I read it as well. So, is this the length of the financing? No. It's the length of that project.
Thank you.
That's my understanding, sir.
Is it a value engineering component?
No, sir.
Okay.
I will say, it's, there's 11 categories. We score points and can receive, based on that score, from 65 to 100, receive 10% or 20% or 30%. And, you know, certainly, if we score high enough at minimum, that would be 6.8 million dollars for this project. That would be something, then you do not have the debt fund. So, you know, I think that's, it's a win-win for all of us, other than, and again, you could say, "I'm not comfortable with this," and not sign the letter of support towards the application. I really would not want you to do that. But it does impact our ability to accumulate those points to score that 65 to at least get that 10%.
One board cannot find a future board. So, let's say our board next year wants to have an amount of budget that is a lower percentage of total local revenue than we have this year. For whatever reason, say we have a new project where we want to build a new athletic complex or whatever. What is the penalty if a future board changes the percentage?
I'm not aware of a penalty, sir, and I'm not aware that the Virginia Department of Education and their funding arm is going to be able to monitor that, other than the initial pledge by the governing body to say, "We don't intend to increase that."
Mr. Chairman, can I add to that answer, Mr. Underwood? That was exactly our concern when I discussed this with Dr. Bradz, is if we have a major windfall of revenue from data centers or whatever it might be, their percentage very well might go down.
Yes.
That's why, in the letter, I didn't say anything about that, other than, "The county understands that grant monies awarded through the School Construction Assistance Program will not offset other fiscal supports provided to the school division as typical in the annual budget development and approval process." So, I'm not willing to commit that we won't lower the percentage, frankly. And if that's not good enough, then we won't get those five points on the application. But that's what we were, how we were trying to come at it.
Makes sense to me, thank you.
He trumped you there for the first time there, Mr. Underwood.
Not the first time.
And for that clarification, in my letter to Chairman Deal, you know, we say, that wording is problematic. I've talked to other superintendents, the wording is problematic. The percentage of local revenues, it can't go down. Well, you don't know what future revenues are going to be for going forward, especially if you have possible large projects coming on board. The intent is, as we reworded it, so here's the deal. We'll submit the letter, check the box, submit the letter. If they do not like the wording in the letter, then they may not award those points to us. So, that could be, that could happen. I do not anticipate that. I anticipate that they will be eager to see folks qualify and frankly, clear the books on the remaining balance of this grant, which there's another $86 million still sitting there. And we would like to have access to some of that, with your support, of course. But thank you.
So, you're saying we should not overthink this, like my commander coaching staff does a lot of times during the game, right?
No, sir. I wouldn't say to you to overthink it. I think you need to be very deliberate. And we have, John, I've been very deliberate about constructing this letter because of that term. We understand that. We're not funded based on percentage annually. We're not ready to have that conversation today. I don't want to have that conversation. There are many divisions that have a base funding formula with a percentage, that whether it's real estate, machine and tools, personal property, they have a set aside. The school division gets X, make up a number, 40%, and that's their formula. So, the basis of their language out of the DOE is, "Oh, well, you can't change that 40% you guys during this project." I think it was that simple, not realizing, for most of us, it doesn't work that way. It works on a relationship, which is very good. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Questions, comments? Entertaining motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would make the motion that the board support the School Construction Assistance Program by endorsing the letter of endorsement.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I'm going to support the motion because it'll save local tax dollars, hopefully. I think we were making mistake renovating versus relocating the middle school, but I still support doing it as efficiently as possible.
Okay. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to the other additional item that we added, the burn ban question, and I'll let John start off with this and run with it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll get this introduced, and Supervisor Bates may wish to elaborate. But we did have a recommendation based on the current situation in Madison County and the current situation with our drought conditions, that we consider a burn ban. That recommendation came from the Volunteer Fire and Rescue Association. So, in considering that, our county attorney hustled and has drafted an emergency ordinance that would prohibit open fires for the duration of the dangerous conditions. She's also drafted a potential motion for approval of that ordinance, and that is ready for your consideration today. The primary thing I would note about the ordinance is that it would be kind of a month-to-month, the way it's been drafted. Sheila set it up so that this burn ban would only last for 30 days or until the next board meeting, whichever is sooner. And so, if we find ourselves in the same position next month as we are today, we would put this back on the agenda and ask the board to extend it another 30 days. It's kind of the concept that Sheila came up with that I agree with. So, I'll stop there. Mr. Bates, I don't know if you have anything to add?
John, I think you've pretty much summed it up. I might add that on November 6, the governor had decided, had signed a declaration of emergency due to the dry conditions throughout the state. And that said, I think we're just working in hand-in-hand with what's going on throughout the state. Again, if this will, if this will have any impact on our county getting rain, I would have signed this a long time ago, because we are definitely in dire need of rain. But I think this is a good move. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I appreciate how this was drafted, where at least it's 30 days and not indefinite. That said, and I really encourage anyone to not be lighting an outside fire right now, or do anything that could cause a spark. It's horribly dry, and that would, we need to avoid that. That said, I don't support the concept of a local ban. I support citizens doing what's right. So, I'm not going to support the ban, but I don't want anyone to be having a fire. So, please don't. Thank you.
Is there going to be any additional accommodations since the dump only takes so much brush to the fact that that's typically how people get rid of their brush and whatnot, instead of having it pile up and causing even bigger fires later? Are we, are there going to be any accommodations made there to allow for additional brush to be delivered to the transfer station or not?
Mr. Howard.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Anybody can, you can bring as much brush to the landfill as you like. The only accommodation we have is there's a 1,000-pound limit for residents that's free. So, you can bring 1,000 pounds free per year, but anything above that, you pay the fee. But you can bring as much as you like, if you're willing to pay for it.
Right, okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I could add, towards Ms. Cugino's comment, keep in mind that there is already an ordinance throughout the county that prohibits bringing brush outside, from outside the property and burning that on your property as it is. But as Supervisor Underwood has commented, common sense is going to tell you right now that I wouldn't be doing anything outside that's going to create a spark, because it's, we're pretty much living in a tinderbox right now. So, I just think that this is reinforcing what the governor has stated. And again, hopefully, this ban on burning won't last long. We'll get rain, and we can lift this and move on as normal. So, thank you.
Any other comments? Or entertaining motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Culpeper County has made an emergency ordinance prohibiting open fires and burning for the duration of a dangerous condition.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, like sign.
Aye.
Okay. Ms. Ellis, note, 5-1 with Mr. Underwood, not in favor. Thank you. Okay, committee reports. Public Works, Mr. Underwood.
We did not meet, sir.
Okay. Building and grounds, no action item for building and grounds. Rules Committee, Mr. Bates.
Mr. Chairman, the committee brings forward a motion that the board authorize advertisement of a public hearing to consider amending Chapter 15, Section 15-3, weapons of the Culpeper County Code. And with that, I will turn that over to either John or Kenny Attorney, Ms. Wymer, for elaboration.
Do you want to get a second, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, need a second on this? Okay. Ms. Cugino, seconded that?
Thank you. So, this issue was brought to our attention by, I guess, the State Game Warden, Sheila. And we have in our code a prohibition against firing a weapon within 100 yards of any primary or secondary highway. That is creating a problem for permits that the Department of Game often issues for the airport. We have permits at the airport that allow the hunting of deer to keep the airport clear of any, you know, animal strikes and that sort of thing on the runway. So, this requested ordinance amendment would make an exception whereby permits could be issued and firing could occur within 100 yards of a primary or secondary highway on county-owned property only. So, this would be a very limited exception to the current code, but would accommodate, again, primarily the airport, but was drafted to apply to any county-owned property.
I understand and appreciate that we need to hunt out at the airport. The way that we're going about this, where we're exempting government from the rules that we put on everyone else, just doesn't strike me that well. And I think there could be other ways to do it that, I mean, for example, if we just made this a permitted use in certain zones, then what we could say is, anyone could apply for a permit, and there could be reasons that other individuals that are not government entities could need it. And the airport could do it, we could all do it. We'd just be doing it in a mechanism where it would be fair for all, rather than us just exempting the county from rules.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, like sign.
Aye.
Okay, Ms. Ellis, same verdict with Mr. Underwood not favoring the motion. Okay, B, Mr. Bates?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Item B, the committee brings forward a motion that the board refer proposed amendments to the subdivision ordinance of the Planning Commission for public hearing. The amendment would modify the process for major preliminary subdivision plan approvals.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Further discussion? And this is something that's been talked about for a while, so.
Fully supportive.
Yeah. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right, Airport Advisory Committee, Supervisor Cugino.
The committee brings forward a motion that the board authorize the implementation of an increase to hanger license fees to become effective February 1, 2024.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Okay, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, up next, Economic Development Director's report, and Brian Raffamel.
Good morning, board. Much like Mr. Carr, I'm on my way out. So, CDC's released me, but still recommending the mask. So, we'll keep it for a few more days. Just want to give you an update on the Public Transportation Board. As you remember, last December, we came for Virginia Regional Transit to apply so that we could bring public service to the Field House, specifically, and some other hotspots in the county. So, to add a... hotspots in the county, so to add a third route to the trolley system that is in town. That, this summer, that grant request was approved, and then we've been working the last few months on adding the third route. Good news is, we are planning on rolling out the route on Monday, found out about an hour ago, that the bus has still not arrived. So we will not be able to do that, but we are weeks away from the soft opening of the third route. We are scheduling a ribbon cutting in January, so I'll have more information about that later, but we'll have a soft opening of the third route going, and then we'll have the ribbon cutting in January at the Field House. Give you just an overview, the new service areas include the Field House, Bennett Road, which is the medical complex there on Bennett Road, and then the North Ridge area, that's the northern route. On the southern route, we have the Culpeper, DMV, Culpeper Wellness, Hampton Inn, and also the Three Flags community. We're working on how to bring regular service to Three Flags in the south. One new thing that will happen to trolley, we will have an express route that will get riders across town in 30 minutes, that's from Weiss to Target. The express route are all considered major stops. That means we, the county pays for two on-demand services. Those are people that can schedule 24 hours in advance, a pickup from anywhere in the county. The goal is to bring them into the trolley system and then get them on the trolley system, so that we're not having two buses follow each other throughout town. These major stops will be where we'll have, the plan is where we'll have drop-offs from the on-demand service. And then, kind of interesting, the Public Transportation Board at its next meeting, which is December 14th, will actually begin on the express route, so the meeting will take a little bit of a field trip. County one and County two are on demand, just as I mentioned before. County two is taken off demand twice a day. Currently, what they do is they go to the Field House in the morning, and then they come back to the trolley system, and then in midday, they go out to Brandy Station to the park-and-ride, because that's where Virginia Breeze has a drop-off station, and then brings them back to the Field House and then back to the trolley system. So currently, County two, that's what it does, twice a day. We will look at what to do with that semi-fixed route, because really, our on-demand service is good enough for about one and a half buses. That's the, how much demand we have. What else can we do with that semi-fixed route? One idea was with the school system for the Family Resource Center is kind of a need. How can we get people to the Family Resource Center, because it's currently not on the trolley system? And then this is the new routes, as you can see, oh, I did the wrong button. There we go. So here's Field House, Bennett Road, North Ridge area, DMV, Hampton Inn, and the Culpeper. This blue route is the express route. So we should, our, our hope was to get it released in November. Once the bus comes in, we do have to get it outfitted with radios and things of that nature to make it functional, so we're still planning in November, but it might get pushed to the 1st of December. But more information about the ribbon cutting, that's all I have.
Thank you, Brian.
Regarding the routes, if, it would be sometime in the future, if we could get them on the south to go a little bit southwest, that would be great also. I think we, I know there is demand, even when you get out to like the 711 at the corner of Mountain Run Lake Road, there are people that don't have access to transportation. I know some do on demand, are on demand, some don't, but if the route went a little bit further west in the future, so the Three Flags and then towards the 711, I think you would find that usage would show up.
And that was one hope, that we could get to Old Country Store.
Yes.
Lake Culpeper Adventures. It's, a lot of these hotspots, these, not as hotspots, but these other spots are close but not, so hopefully, maybe County two, that's something we're thinking about, that we brought up, is if we could do County two out there, then we could get people there and back, back into the system.
That would be awesome, thank you.
Okay, John, with the administrator's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I will be brief. The annual VACO conference is coming up November 11 through 14. I know that several of you and myself will be attending that, and then that leads us into next week, the committee meetings, just a reminder, will be held on Wednesday, the 15th, rather than Tuesday, the 14th, as a result of that conference. And we'll have agendas for those committee meetings ready today for the chairman to review. Thank you.
Thank you, John. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to carry us into closed session.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we enter into closed meeting as permitted under Virginia Code, Sections 2.2-3711A, 1, 3, 4, 6, and 8, and 2.2-3705.7333, to discuss and consider a citizen's appointment to the following committees' public bodies: Agricultural Forestry District Advisory Committee, Culpeper Community Policy, Policy and Management Team, SEDAC, the CHS Board, Culpeper Regional Airport Advisory Committee, EDA, Library Board, Parks and Rec Advisory Committee, Planning Commission, Towing Advisory Board, and the VASAP Board. The potential purchase, for number two, the potential purchase of real estate, real property located in the West Fairfax District, where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position, negotiating strategy, and financial interest of the board of county. And three, to consult with legal counsel regarding information prepared by the Virginia Economic Development Partnership Authority for the allocation of resources for a potential economic development project in the Cedar Mountain District, where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the strategy of the Commonwealth in conjunction with the county board, if made public.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, closed session. Thank you all for coming today.